Okay, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, March 27th, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on cable, Channel 8. If we could, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have that? No one? Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask or make a statement that public comment will be heard at the end of each presentation. If for some reason I ever forget, please raise your hand and I will make certain that you are heard. Very important that everybody is heard when they choose to be heard during an appointment, during a presentation, or at the end of the presentation, I mean. So tonight, sitting on the first continued hearing would be the three regular members and...
Yorba.
Well, no, because he can't sit in the first one.
Oh, the first one.
See that? All right, I'm on the top of my game. George and Charlie. All right, he's gonna sit down. So if you would like to read, Charlie guessed the first continued hearing, please.
Sure. For Wednesday, March 27th, 2024, continued hearing, 70 Alma Road. Petitioners Patrick and Julie McNamara request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district in the Papanaeset Overlay District, MAP 117, parcel 161, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Henry F. Silowats and Marilyn T. Silowats, Irrevocable Family Trust. Continued from March 13th, March 27th, 2024. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until April 24 hearing. And I have the letter dated March 21, 2024, from the offices of Christopher Corain. Dear Chairman Bonby, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. Requested that the hearing rescheduled for March 27, 2024, be continued until April 24, 2024, as the applicant will not be appearing before the Conservation Commission until April 18, 2024. Thank you for your attention.
Would you like to add anything to that?
Oh, I'm starting to feel like a broken record on these.
It's okay, we got it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, Mary Ann, are we still within the...
Yes. As long as we have...
Charlie, would you like to read the extended 425, continued hearing, 425 Monmouth Square,
A request from the applicant.
And whoever makes the motion, if we're asked to make a motion, make sure that we please?
Okay, 425 Monmouth Square Road.
state that the representative for the applicant, Mr. Corain, has agreed to and will sign
Owners Mark H. and Lisa White request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning
an extension request. So anybody on the board have any questions?
No.
bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with
Okay, that being said, Charlie, would you like to make a motion in reference to that letter? And please include the fact that he's agreed to sign a document reflecting what's in that
a new single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 124,
letter.
Okay, so we are on 70 Alma Road. parcel 55, Mashpee, Mass. Motion has been proposed by counsel for the owner, requesting a continuance from this Continued from March 13th, March 27th, 2024. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until April 24, 2024. date to the date of April 24, 2024. Hearing. And again, a letter from attorney Christopher Corain dated March 21, 2024, directed to And counsel for the petitioner agrees to sign whatever forms or documents are necessary to accomplish that.
Do I have a second?
Chairman Bonby.
Second.
As you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. It is hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for March 27, 2024, excuse me, be continued
Thank you.
What is it, 20?
Just 7th.
24.
27th.
27th. Hmm, sorry.
to April 24, 2024, as the applicants will not be appearing before the Conservation Commission until April 18, 2024. Thank you for your attention.
So Charlie, if you were asked to make a motion, just make sure we add the fact that the representative for the applicant has agreed to sign an extension. Chris, would you like to add anything else?
There's a lot I'd like to add, but no.
There you go.
And Mary Ann, we do have time, right? With the extension signed by the attorney.
Charlie, would you make a motion, please?
Relative to 425 Monmouth Square Road, it is moved to petitioner and the owners that the hearing scheduled for this evening be continued until April 24, 2024. And the petitioners and counsel agree to prepare and sign whatever documents are necessary to accomplish that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, 14 capstan, the sitting members will be the four full-time members and with Charlie. How's that? And Charlie, would you please read 14 capstan circle, continued hearing, please?
14 capstan circle. Owners Robert P. McDonald Jr. and Tracy A. McDonald request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom single-family dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 111, parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from March 13th, March 27th, 2024. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until April 24, 2024. Hearing. And again, a letter from attorney Christopher Corain dated March 21, 2024, directed to Chairman Bonby. As you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for March 27, 2024, excuse me, be continued to April 24, 2024, as the applicants will not be appearing before the Conservation Commission until April 18, 2024. Thank you for your attention.
So Charlie, if you were asked to make a motion, just make sure we add the fact that the representative for the applicant has agreed to sign an extension. Chris, would you like to add anything else?
There's a lot I'd like to add, but no.
There you go.
And Mary Ann, we do have time, right? With the extension signed by the attorney.
Charlie, would you make a motion, please?
Relative to 425 Monmouth Square Road, it is moved to petitioner and the owners that the hearing scheduled for this evening be continued until April 24, 2024. And the petitioners and/or counsel sign whatever documents are necessary to accomplish that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, 14 capstan, the sitting members will be the four full-time members and with Charlie. How's that? And Charlie, would you please read 14 capstan circle, continued hearing, please?
14 capstan circle. Owners Robert P. McDonald Jr. and Tracy A. McDonald request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom single-family dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 111, parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from March 13th, March 27th, 2024. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until April 24, 2024. Hearing. And again, a letter from attorney Christopher Corain dated March 21, 2024, directed to Chairman Bonby. As you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for March 27, 2024, excuse me, be continued to April 24, 2024, as the applicants will not be appearing before the Conservation Commission until April 18, 2024. Thank you for your attention.
So Charlie, if you were asked to make a motion, just make sure we add the fact that the representative for the applicant has agreed to sign an extension. Chris, would you like to add anything else?
There's a lot I'd like to add, but no.
There you go.
And Mary Ann, we do have time, right? With the extension signed by the attorney.
Charlie, would you make a motion, please?
Relative to 425 Monmouth Square Road, it is moved to petitioner and the owners that the hearing scheduled for this evening be continued until April 24, 2024. And the petitioners and/or counsel agree to prepare and sign whatever documents are necessary to accomplish that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, 14 capstan, the sitting members will be the four full-time members and with Charlie. How's that? And Charlie, would you please read 14 capstan circle, continued hearing, please?
14 capstan circle. Owners Robert P. McDonald Jr. and Tracy A. McDonald request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom single-family dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 111, parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from March 13th, March 27th, 2024. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until April 24, 2024. And the petitioners and/or counsel sign whatever documents are necessary to accomplish that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is it Wednesday? Is the next meeting the 24th? No.
No, we have another one.
Yeah.
10th, yeah, I'm not here the 10th.
I'm not here the 10th either. I leave on the 6th, though. I'm gonna join by Zoom, but only to listen, presumably. And Sharon will be the master of ceremonies.
I had a little doubt you'll just be listening.
Oh, no, I beg your pardon, will you? I will put a muffle on, all right?
For some reason, my phone...
You are mute.
It's okay.
I can just hang up.
It's all right, I'm fine with that. Fine, fine, fine.
They got the mute button on those phones, too, right?
Hey, hey. So I have a special request from counsel in reference to 17 Monmouth Square, which I don't have a problem with. He'd like to take it out of order. Why? Because he's asking for an extension and that one also. So it makes sense, so he'd have to stick around and he can give his clients a break.
Yes.
As I'm sure he will. So if that's okay, but with one caveat that we want to make certain, when at the end of the night, we say that 17 has been extended, if anyone in the audience is here to hear it. Anybody in the audience in 17 Monmouth Square here for that? Perfect, all right. That being said, so it'll be the four regular members and George, and would you please read 17 Monmouth Square Road in, Charlie, and you'll see that there's a letter. There you go.
Okay, 17 Monmouth Square Road West. Owners Berea St. John Trust, Berea D. St. John, and Elena C. St. John trustees request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and detached garage and replace it with a new single-family dwelling with attached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 114, parcel 20, Mashpee, Mass. And all I need to do is to get the letter. Got it. And we have a letter from attorney Chris Corain dated March 25, 2024. Dear Chairman Bonby, as you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing scheduled for March 27, 2024, be continued to April 10, 2024, as the hearing on the applicant's notice of intent is continued by the Conservation Commission to April 4, 2024.
So if you were asked to make a motion, you will state...
I will. The motion relative to 17 Monmouth Square Road West...
One second, Charlie. Do you have a question in reference to this? William?
Do we have the time for the extension?
Okay, I'm just gonna put that... I'm gonna record that, play it. All right, I'm sorry, Charlie, would you like to make a motion?
I will, I will. And the motion relative to this property on behalf of the applicant and counsel is to continue the hearing scheduled for this evening to April 4, 2024.
April 10.
And the petitioners and/or counsel...
April 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. April 10, I'm sorry, yep, 2024. And that the petitioner and/or counsel prepare and sign whatever documents are necessary to accomplish this.
I'm sorry, counsel, the chairman forgot. Who's sitting on this? Who did I say?
George.
Okay, great. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. Enjoy your night.
Good evening.
I think the kitchen's still open at tomatoes.
I think so. Four down, two to go.
I'm gonna apologize to these poor guys who haven't listened to that.
Okay, have a good night.
All right, have a good night. Thank you. Thank you.
He's reading the job postings.
Okay, so sitting on the next or the first new hearing will be four regular members and Charlie. Charlie, would you like to read the first new hearing, which is 53 Secconset?
New hearing, 53 Secconset Island Road. Owner Stephen Devlin requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 14-foot by 23-foot addition to the second floor of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 119, parcel 6, Mashpee, Mass.
Grab another. So could you state your name and your involvement in the project, please?
Yes, I'm Stephen Devlin, owner of the property, resident and licensed builder that will be doing the work. So I produced the design drawings that you have. We are a two-bedroom home now after we renovated about a year and a half ago, and we do have a three-bedroom septic, so we're adding. We have to stay inside the footprint, and we're putting a second-story, 14-foot by 23-foot bedroom.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Charlie, would you read all letters from anyone in this community and/or butters into the record, please?
Yep, from my review, just to make sure. I have correspondence from Conservation. I have correspondence from Town Planner Evan, and I have correspondence from the Board of Health.
Right.
Going in reverse order, relative to the...
If I'm overworking you, Charlie, you let me know.
That's okay, I can hold you.
Okay.
Not as old as I look.
I wasn't insinuating.
Okay. Board of Health, relative to 53 Secconset Island Road. Owner, Board of Health, house is a two-bedroom. Septic was originally designed for three-bedroom, and this would be the third bedroom. No issues with health department. Conservation. Resource areas, buffer zone to coastal bank and buffer zone to LSC SF. Second-floor addition to existing dwelling was issued administrative approval as plans show no increase in footprint and existing dwelling will not be demolished. On-site inspection with agent before project begins and after project is complete with limited work in place until construction activity is completed. And from Evan Lera, Community Development Director, and it's a short one, so I'll read the whole thing into the record. 53 Secconset Island Road. Subject property is improved with a lawful pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling off Secconset Island Road. The lot is undersized and totals 4,360 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required. The existing lot coverage is non-conforming at 26.8%. Additionally, the front, side, and rear setbacks are also pre-existing non-conforming. The applicant does not propose any alterations of those pre-existing non-conformities, and the setbacks, as shown on the plan, as well as the lot coverage by structures, would not be altered by the proposed project. The project is limited to a second-floor addition with no impact on the lot coverage. Please consider the following in... Please consider in your deliberations the following pre-existing non-conformities. One, minimum lot area. Two, frontage. Three, side yard setback, all of them. Four, front yard setback. Five, rear yard setback. Six, lot coverage. Planning department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations would not substantially be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding so long as the building height does not exceed 35 feet and is not more than two and a half stories. That's all I have.
Okay, board questions, please. Thank you, Charlie. Board questions, please?
I don't have any. Touching the ground?
Very modest.
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Morse, do you have any comments? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, in the motion, you need to include those two.
Yeah, you want to include Conservation and Evan, please. And if you were asked to make a motion, Charlie, Evan and Conservation. Including but not limited to.
The height is not allowed playing, and it's not close.
Yeah, just might as well include that close. So David, do you have any comments?
No issues at all.
Twenty-two.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any input in reference to this application?
No, sir.
There you go. You're the only one. Okay. One more time, board questions?
No.
Okay. I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing. Charlie, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second in reference to closing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have a motion in reference to the application, Charlie, please.
All right, just one question. Relative to any conditions that are not included already on the proposed motion, I will only add that the building height does not exceed 35 feet and is not more than two and a half stories.
Yeah, and I would say that including the letters and including but not limited to Conservation and Town Planner letters. And that will cover it. Did you add to that the tree... We didn't have to yet, or we did? Okay, good. So you'll see in your motion form, there is an inclusion of tree cutting or tree bylaw.
Okay.
So be careful on that one. So would you please make a motion, Charlie?
Be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, this is a motion relative to 53 Secconset Island Road. The owner, Stephen Devlin, requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 14-foot by 23-foot addition to the second floor of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 119, parcel 6, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A, Section 6.2, site plan. Prepared for Stephen J. Devlin, 53 Secconset Island Road. Sheet number 1 of 1, date December 21, 2021. Drawn by JVB. Checked by MC. Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Drawing title, existing conditions planned. Three proposed renovations. 53 Secconset Island Road, second-story addition, date 10/30/20. Scale 1/4 inch equals 1 foot. Design, Steve Devlin. Drawing number A1, front elevation. A2, east elevation. A3, rear elevation. A4, west elevation. A5, second-floor plan. Conditions on all Town Department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments, as well as the comments and recommendations from Evan Lera, Community Development Director, with the condition that the building height does not exceed 35 feet and is not more than two and a half stories. Any change... Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Town Planner's Review in reference to the tree bylaw, Chapter 175 of Town Bylaws, prior to the application of the building permit. Seven, the board finds under 174-17 and 174-33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
Well done. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Certain trees can't come down.
Certain trees, wait.
Certain trees. I got one of those.
You guys got stuff coming back?
Yes, thank you.
documents are necessary to accomplish this.
I'm sorry, counsel, Chairman forgot who's sitting on this. Who did I say? Okay, great. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Enjoy your night.
I think the kitchen's still open at tomatoes.
I think so.
Four down, two to go.
Okay, have a good night.
Have a good night.
He's reading the job postings.
Okay, so sitting on the next or the first new hearing will be four regular members and Charlie. Charlie, would you like to read the first new hearing, which is 53 Secant?
New hearing, 53 Secant Island Road. Owner, Stephen Devlin, requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 14-foot by 23-foot addition to the second floor of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 6, Mashpee, Mass.
Grab another. So could you state your name and your involvement in the project, please?
Yes, I'm Stephen Devlin, owner of the property, resident, and licensed builder that will be doing the work. So I produced the design drawings that you have. We are a two-bedroom home now after we renovated about a year and a half ago, and we do have a three-bedroom septic, so we're adding. We have to stay inside the footprint, and we're putting a second-story 14-foot by 23-foot bedroom.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Charlie, would you read all letters from anyone in this community and/or butters into the record, please?
Yep, from my review, just to make sure. I have correspondence from Conservation. I have correspondence from Town Planner Evan, and I have correspondence from the Board of Health. Going in reverse order relative to the board...
If I'm overworking you, Charlie, you let me know.
That's okay, I can hold.
Okay.
Not as old as I look.
I wasn't insinuating.
Okay. Board of Health, relative to 53 Secant Island Road. Owner, Board of Health, house is a two-bedroom. Septic was originally designed for three-bedroom, and this would be the third bedroom. No issues with health department. Conservation. Resource areas buffer zone to Coastal Bank and buffer zone to LSC SF. Second-floor addition to existing dwelling was issued administrative approval as plans show no increase in footprint and existing dwelling will not be demolished. On-site inspection with agent before project begins and after project is complete with limited work in place until construction activity is completed. And from Evan Lera, Community Development Director, and it's a short one, so I'll read the whole thing into the record. 53 Secant Island Road. Subject property is improved with a lawful pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling off Secant Island Road. The lot is undersized and totals 4,360 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required. The existing lot coverage is non-conforming at 26.8%. Additionally, the front, side, and rear setbacks are also pre-existing non-conforming. The applicant does not propose any alterations of those pre-existing non-conformities, and the setbacks, as shown on the plan, as well as the lot coverage by structures, would not be altered by the proposed project. The project is limited to a second-floor addition with no impact on the lot coverage. Please consider the following in... Please consider in your deliberations the following pre-existing non-conformities. One, minimum lot area. Two, frontage. Three, side yard setback, all of them. Four, front yard setback. Five, rear yard setback. Six, lot coverage. Planning Department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations would not substanti... be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding so long as the building height does not exceed 35 feet and is not more than two and a half stories. That's all I have.
Okay, board questions, please. Thank you, Charlie. Board questions, please?
I don't have any.
Touching the ground?
Very modest.
Okay, Mr. Morse, do you have any comments? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, in the motion, you need to include those two.
Yeah, you want to include Conservation and Evan, please. And if you were asked to make a motion, Charlie, Evan and Conservation. Including but not limited to.
The height is not allowed to play, and it's not that close.
Yeah, just might as well include them close. So David, do you have any comments?
No issues at all.
Twenty-two.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any input in reference to this application?
No, sir.
There you go. You're the only one. Okay, one more time, board questions? Okay, would you like to get a motion to close the public hearing? Charlie, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second in reference to closing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Like to have a motion in reference to the application, Charlie, please?
Just one question. Relative to any conditions that are not included already on the proposed motion, I will only add that the building height does not exceed 35 feet and is not more than two and a half stories.
Yeah, and I would say that including the letters and including but not limited to Conservation and Town Planner letters. And that will cover it. Did you add to that the tree?
We didn't have to yet. Or we did?
Okay, good. So you'll see in your motion form, there is an inclusion of tree cutting or tree bylaw.
Okay.
So be careful on that one. So if you... Would you please make a motion, Charlie?
Be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so motion relative to 53 Secant Island Road. The owner, Stephen Devlin, requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 14-foot by 23-foot addition to the second floor of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 6, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A Section 6.2, site plan, prepared for Stephen J. Devlin, 53 Secant Island Road, sheet number 1 of 1, date December 21, 2021, drawn by JVB, checked by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, drawing title, existing conditions plan. Three proposed renovations. 53 Secant Island Road, second-story addition, date 10/30/20, scale 1/4 inch equals 1 foot. Designed Steve Devlin, drawing number A1, front elevation, A2, east elevation, A3, rear elevation, A4, west elevation, A5, second-floor plan. Condition on all Town Department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments, as well as the comments and recommendations from Evan Lera, Community Development Director, with the condition that the building height does not exceed 35 feet and is not more than two and a half stories. Any change, number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Town Planner's review in reference to the Tree Bylaw, Chapter 175 of Town Bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. Seven, the board finds under 174-17 and 174-33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
Well done. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Certain trees can't come down.
Certain trees, right.
Certain trees. I got one of those.
You guys got stuff coming back?
They weren't your cut boards in the town meeting?
Stuff on the far right, that's it.
Make sure you sign in the right spot.
Yes, sir.
You did? This is the last one?
We don't have a tree ward in this town. It falls under Evan's office. And then Evan has to go and inspect trees.
Is that...
Well, some of them have. He's always got the trees.
Evan. Good luck.
There's a lot of people.
Do you know what they're looking at?
I know I don't.
You're gonna have to become an arborist.
If the roof system gets damaged, if that tree's good enough.
That's up to him. He's overseeing.
Everybody had a chance to vote on a town meeting.
So the next one will be four regular members and George. Charlie, would you like to read 10 Magnolia Lane into the record, please?
Number 10 Magnolia Lane. Owner, Paul Aries, requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 12.4-foot by 12-foot three-season sunroom and a front porch extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 7, parcel 76, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, if you could give your name and your involvement in the project, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Yes, my name is Paul Aries. My wife Jennifer Aries and I own the property at 10 Magnolia Lane. We are currently requesting to put a three-season porch in the rear of the property along the rear property line. I believe on the original set of plans that was submitted on the original plot plan, it listed the porch as a proposed when in reality that was existing. So this is not doing anything with the property. There's no increase in footprint for the front porch area. On the back where the three-season porch would go, we are, I believe, a couple of feet short of the setback from that rear boundary. There is no abutter to our rear, and no abutter on any side of our property can even see the back of the house where that is gonna go. It does not require removing any trees or anything, and it is just simply adding on to the original deck and using part of the footprint. And I believe we do not exceed our total coverage area on the lot.
So are you creating any new non-conformities?
The... It's my understanding that the three-season porch would be over the existing setback, and that is the reason we are requesting the written finding.
He's not... You are not creating...
I don't see any additional non-conformity.
Thank you.
So the answer to the question, David, is no?
The answer is no.
Thank you. That's perfect. That's important. All right, so Charlie, could you please read letters from town agencies, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, we have, my understanding, three plus the letter from Mr. Aries, relative to the existence of the porch.
I'm sorry?
No, we have three from outside.
Talking about letters. You've sent a letter to this board?
I did not.
Somebody did, or I didn't see anything?
So you're saying, Charlie, we have three plus?
We have a lot of...
I'll read that first. I have a... An email relative to 10 Magnolia Lane petition. That's from Paul Aries, dated March 25, 2024, to Mary Ann. Thanks for the agenda. I am a little concerned that in our listing, it states that the three-season porch and front porch extension. In our conversations with Dave, we said that the front porch is not being treated as an extension that had already been permitted, and that is why we had to change the plot plan. Just want to be sure that this is not an issue Wednesday. Just to clarify what you had told us a few minutes ago.
I apologize.
An email is communication. I should have said communication.
Yes, I did send that email. That is correct.
Thank you, Charlie. Please continue.
Okay, and... Comments from the Board of Health relative to... 10 Magnolia Lane. Board of Health, sunroom is not habitable for sleeping. House to remain three-bedroom. Plot plan does show a garage with driveway over Leaching Field. Leaching Field is H10 loading and not structurally designed for vehicle traffic over. And Conservation, if I remember, there was no...
Not within Wetlands jurisdiction.
Correct.
Yep, not within Wetlands. And the evaluation from the Town Planner relative to 10 Magnolia Lane. Again, it's shot, so I will read it. The subject property is improved with a lawful pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling off Magnolia Lane along the southwestern shores of Mashpee-Wakeby. The lot contains 28,143 square feet of upland area where 80,000 square feet is required. The plan shows an existing side yard setback, non-conformity along the westerly lot line created by the existing wood deck, which is constructed 10.9 feet from the side lot line. The principal dwelling front yard setback is also non-conforming with the plan showing 38 feet from the front lot line to the corner of the existing porch where 40 feet is required. The lot coverage is currently 5.9%, where 20% is the maximum. The applicant proposes a modest sunroom addition to the rear of the home totaling a bit more than 144 square feet. The addition will be setback 11.9 feet from the side property line, which is less than the 15-foot required, but more than the 10.9-foot pre-existing non-conforming setback from the side lot line to existing wood deck. In addition to the sunroom, the applicant proposes a 24-foot by 25.3-foot detached garage, 607.2 square feet. All setbacks are met with a proposed garage. Please consider in your deliberations the following pre-existing non-conformities. Minimum lot area, frontage, side yard setback westerly, front yard setback. Recommendations of the Town Planner. Planning Department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding. The plan shows a potential vernal pool off of the property to the south. Please ensure Conservation is satisfied with regard to any potential impacts to the potential vernal pool.
Do we have communication from Conservation?
They don't have any communication of the indicated that it was not within the...
Well...
Well, it's not.
Yeah, well, but a vernal... Oh, listen, we're not Conservation.
Nope.
So that being said, board questions. I have a question. It seems as though... So the advertisement is... Mentions nothing about a proposed garage. Are you proposing a garage?
The garage is being proposed under a separate permit.
Okay, so you're not asking tonight, just for clarity, because the plan says proposed garage. In this application is not included a garage.
And this application is not included the garage. It is the three-season porch only.
Yes, David.
And the garage is really not... Not... Doesn't have to be reviewed by this board.
Perfect. It's just, I just want to make sure we're not including it, and that's up to you, David. The zoning enforcement. So board questions, please.
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? If you were asked to make a motion, I see there's a Board of Health, and then probably I would refer to Evan's letter and Conservation. At least have him reach out. He's already reached out, so... I would just refer to Evan's letter and Board of Health. I would say, including but not limited to Board of Health comments and...
Comments of Evan.
Evan, and then we'll see where both...
And leave it at that.
Excuse me?
And just leave it at that?
Yeah, I don't know where else to take it. I mean, Conservation is historically verithural, and it's not up to us to make that decision. And Evan pointed it out, so I've got to believe that Conservation is aware of it.
I'm fine with that.
And vernal pools way more than 50 feet left.
Okay, so, I mean, I think we're fine as long as we make reference to Evan's letter and Board of Health, please. Would you like to make a motion?
A motion relative to 10 Magnolia Lane. Owner Paul Aries requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 12.4-foot by 12-foot three-season sunroom and a front porch extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 27, parcel 76, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A Section 6. Site plan, prepared for Paul Aries, Project 10 Magnolia Lane, sheet number 1 of 1, date September 28, 2023, drawn by MPR, checked by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, 3524. Add existing front porch, 11724. Add 75-foot buffer, 1824. Add proposed garage and sunroom, 101723. Added proposed porch extension. Building plans, Great Day Improvements LLC, sunroom addition on new deck with new piers for Aries residents. Patio enclosures, date 11/2/23, drawn by JPO, scale 1/4 inch, excuse me, equals 1 foot, sheet 1 of 10. Condition on all Town Department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments, as well as the comments and recommendations from Evan Lera that have been forwarded to the board and read into the record. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Town Planner's review in reference to the Tree Bylaw, Chapter 175 of Town Bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. The board finds under 174-17 and 174-33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
If I could just add, I did not go to the audience for audience participation because there's no one in the audience. I just want to make that part of the record.
There's no audience out there.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go, sir.
Well, sir. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, progress.
Coming back plans. One more.
Oh, jeez, he's doing it again.
Do we have pictures of you doing home inspections?
That's right.
Great job, as always.
Absolutely.
I'm so glad you're doing that.
Charlie, you're unbelievable.
Say yes. There you go.
That's why he's a lawyer.
It's the right guy.
Was that it? Was this five?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
Can I get a motion from someone in reference to the approval of minutes dated March 13, 2024, please?
So moved.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? So I have nothing. We continue to interact with... Well, I continue to interact with Town Council in reference to settling several outstanding remands. I will not even get into them, but there are several.
Really?
It's amazing how often I get sued nowadays. So I just, you know, that's just... Yeah, that's... I get it. So I have nothing.
I have to be.
The 10th?
I'm required to be here.
I'll be here.
There you go.
I don't know about the 24th, but 10th I'll be here.
Excellent.
Unless there's a big snowstorm.
Maybe there's a hurricane.
Could happen.
Any other questions? Motion to adjourn from someone. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Well done, gentlemen.